Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have a moment of silence, it'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the July 7th, 2020 Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any board members have any amendments to offer at this time?
Thank you. I do. Madam Clerk and Mr. Chair, I would like to take item 12 separately, please, from the consent agenda.
You said item 12, you did not get the correct version. Or do I not have it? All right, is that Resolution 2020-10?
Twenty dash twenty dash one on one.
Yes, okay. I will second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Also, I would like to remove at this time the Veteran of the Month presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Are there any other recommendations or deletions?
Yes, I would like to take item number five, which is 2074 separately, as well as item 13 separately.
Which item is 13? What's the resolution number?
Item 13 is Resolution 2020-107. And finally, I'd like to take item 26 separately, which is 2020-120. Actually, I would love to remove that one and have the board consider looking at additional options, but it's fine to take it separate. That's it?
Okay, so we're asking, you want to take all of these separate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was item number five recommendation for award number 20-74. The other one's Resolution 2020-13. What is it, 107? 107. The other one was...
2020-120.
2020-120. So there's three recommendations for those three to be taken off the consent agenda, placed on the regular agenda. That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Any others? All right, here and um, take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second by Commissioner Warner. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, it's...
Um, I want to like, 23, I wanted to take separate. I think that we need to hear from the constituents, but it's fine, go right ahead.
Okay, anybody opposed?
I do.
Here and um, it's unanimous. I'm clerk.
Next on the agenda is a presentation and proclamation. The Major Sherman Dwayne Lemon Roll Call Room, presented by Commissioner Sona Gregory.
I'm on my way, but while I'm coming, I would like to ask our Police Chief Roberts to come forward.
I just want to step over here for a minute. The Commissioner afforded me just a couple of moments to speak about Major Sherman Lemon, and I'm glad you gave me that opportunity, Commissioner.
In this time of crisis throughout our nation and in the county and in metropolitan area, we look to leaders who establish relationships with the community. Major Sherman Lemon is a fixture in this community. He was a fixture in the Clayton County Police Department. He was a fixture in District One and remains the same as such. And I just wanted to let Major Lemon know what kind of impact he had on not only the police department, but this community. So if you look to the right, you see Deputy Chief Parks, Captain Gazzar Hill, Major William E. Rondo, and Captain Chris Wendley. Those are all of the previous Sector Commanders for the Sector One Precinct, which we will name the Roll Call Room after Major Lemon. And I wanted to point that out, Major, because you've touched so many lives in the police department and you've touched so many lives in the community through your faith, your leadership, and your generosity. And I'm gonna say this, I worked for the Major when he was the precinct commander on Riverdale Road, and what I loved about him was he's a people person. He cares about people. He cares about police officers. He cares about faith-based institutions. He cares about citizens. And the takeaway from me, Major, is we learned that from you. We learned that from you, and we plan to continue your legacy. And every day that those young men and women that served the Sector One community walk into their roll call room, they will have someone to look up to and emulate. I applaud you and honor you for your service and commitment to this county and the agency. I can't hug you, but I can give you one more of these.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors...
The Commissioner is absolutely right. The precinct that I serve under Major Lemon as precinct commander is the one that's on Riverdale Road and is the one that we're replacing and turning into a Cadillac, upgrading from a Ford. So the Ford that you used to walk around in, now we're walking around in a Cadillac, thanks to your leadership.
As Chief Roberts said, back in the mid 90s, mid to early 90s, I know when I moved to Rex, and a lot of us, is Marie Harvey here, by the way? I know we can't tell each other with the mask. Marie Harvey? When I moved to Rex, and we reached out to the police department to try to get some help with us and getting our neighborhoods right and making sure we knew about neighborhood watches and so forth, and we got Captain Lemon. It was Captain Lemon, we knew him as Captain Lemon. And as Chief Roberts said, he was such a people person, and I can tell you, some of the communities that he helped us with in that area, some of them you used to be scared to go into, but because he's such a people person, he was able to help us, help people get their neighborhoods under control. And that's what, you know, I remember him so well by, and he just never got upset with us and he, you know, and we didn't, of course, a lot of us didn't know what we were doing. So he was always there for us. And so it's an honor that we can name this Roll Call Room after him, and hopefully one day with this COVID stuff in, that we can have a little ceremony and, you know, we put our plaque up and so that everybody would know. My husband was telling me that there are a lot of, he see a lot of females that in the, come through the police department now, which I think is just great, you know, that girl power. And so that all these new, young people will see, you know, who came before them. And so just the legacy he leaves behind is great, and it's just an honor to name that Roll Call Room at.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say, back, of course, in the early 90s, up at North Clayton High School, when we were in transition and everything and we were having some problems or whatever, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you were an officer then, because we were having trouble getting officers promoted and that kind of thing. But under, let me just say, Major Lemon, he led a group of officers that came up and volunteered to secure and be there for our girls and boys at North Clayton High School back in the early 90s. So I really appreciate you, and North Clayton really appreciates you. So thank you so much for everything you've done for Clayton County.
Yeah, I definitely would not let this opportunity go by. Everything they said about Sherman Lemon is absolutely true. And you know, he has had a great impact on my life. When I was hired by the Clayton County Police, and I don't want to prolong the hours, the meeting, but I want to make sure they really understand the impact that this man had in our community. I was like the third African American on the Clayton County Police Department at that time. And there was a lot going on. Third African American. I was going through a whole lot as well as he did. He encouraged me, he prayed, he mentored, he kept me at that department. I ended up being the chief of police at that same department, and I can say unequivocally, had it not been for this man, I would have left a long time ago. But here I am, 36, 33, four years later, still with Clayton County. But thank you. Yeah, 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 kind of telling your age, but I guess our age. But thank you for all you've done for me and my family over the years. You've been a great friend, a great mentor.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors the legacy of Major Sherman Dwayne Lemon, the second African American police officer in Clayton County by renaming the Police Sector One Precinct Roll Call Room. Whereas Sherman Dwayne Lemon, retired major of Clayton County Police Department, is always a man of integrity. He is considerate and authentic. His Clayton County coworkers thought of him as a man who was larger than life and could say more in his silent towering presence than all the lectures in the world, instilling in others and his children a high work ethic and sense of personal honor and respect. And whereas proud son of the late Willie D. and Mary C. Lemon was born in McDonough, Henry County, Georgia, Major Lemon is married to Shannon Cole Lemon, and they have two sons, Shannon Dwayne Lemon and Brennan Terrell Jones. He and Shannon enjoy the best part of retirement as loving, proud, and happy grandparents to Christopher Daniel Lemon and Brielle Jones. And whereas a 1973 graduate of Henry County Senior High School, Sherman began working in the family business WD Lemon and Sons Funeral Home and attended Gupta &amp; Jones College of Mortuary Science in 1976. He graduated with an Associate of Science degree and became a licensed funeral director and embalmer. While a student at Henry County Senior High School, Sherman attended Gordon Jr. College at night to become an emergency medical tech. He graduated in 1972 as a certified EMT and began working at Henry County Emergency Medical Services until 1978. And whereas on July 10th, 1978, Sherman was hired by the Clayton County Police Department, completing the police academy in 1979, he was the second African American police officer hired by Clayton County. Sherman's dedication to public service resulted in his advancement within the police department. In June 1982, he was promoted to detective. And in February 1984, he was promoted to detective sergeant in the Criminal Investigation Division, where he had supervisory responsibilities and directed numerous cases involving serious criminal activity. He continued to lead within the police department and was again promoted on February 25th, 1994 to the rank of lieutenant as a zone commander in the Uniform Patrol Division. While serving the community of the North Precinct with professionalism, leadership, and dedication, he was promoted to the rank of captain precinct commander on November 23rd, 2002. The culmination of his career occurred on June 7th, 2005, when he was promoted and also became the first African American major. He served as the commander in the Criminal Investigation Division until his retirement on May 17th, 2008. Now therefore, I, Sona Single Gregory, Commissioner of the District One, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, officially endorse the Clayton County Police Sector One Precinct Roll Call Room to be named the Major Sherman Dwayne Lemon Roll Call Room. The Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes Major Lemon's legacy of service in law enforcement, expressing their deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the citizens of Clayton County. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the 7th day of July in the year 2020.
Now honoring Mr. Shockley Buford, an African American icon in law enforcement.
Next, the board will hear a public comment. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name, county of residency for the record, excuse me. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mr. Alvin Farmer.
If you could give this to our Commissioner Warner. If y'all wrote this paper as good as y'all wrote that splotch asking for money, I would understand it better. Could you give this Commissioner Warner, please?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Farmer, pro after community activist, 24-year Air Force veteran, venom's harms way. Black lives matter, even at bus stops. I got a call at 4:15 PM that they got some issues with that bus stop at the Aquatic Center. The CEO of MARTA came on 2 June saying that bus stop will be moved in two weeks. There are 23 days pass overdue, three years pass overdue, and still that bus stop is not removed. Somebody on the face of this earth can make MARTA and you move that bus stop, and I'm gonna make every effort to find that person and bring them to you and have that bus stop moved. Fire station number six, $600,000 of Clayton County taxpayers' money. I informed you, we did not get our money worth because I was trained in that thing. Somebody on the face of this earth knows about that, and they can have you fix that thing. Because now that I did the research, it's not only a safety hazard, probably a fire hazard for those people working at their fire department. That is the closest fire station to my home. Still, the word is out there that you cut the funding for the public defenders, but you are asking for a $50,000 pay raise. That's over $1,000 a week for those that are not mathematicians. I called your lawyer and asked him that they said, "I'm calling Clayton County and not asking about county business." I have not got a phone call from him yet. Y'all gave me instructions that not to go back to fire station number six past that. I followed your instructions on that. But somebody gonna come, and then we're gonna walk through that building and say, "She won't listen to me, and you sound like you need a second opinion," and then we're gonna get that, have not heard from your lawyer, not Lieutenant Thomas. I had a meeting with him, with Major Daniels and Chief Ganikus. All of that is confusing me. I want exactly what I said and what I can say and what I can't say. What I can ask and what I can't ask, because I'm confused, and I don't want to make that mistake again. So give me clarification. Your lawyer has not responded, and I called him and left a message, and have not got a call back from him as yet. If he called, he did not leave a message, like he did last time. I want clarification. You take my money and the Clayton County people money, and we're not getting our money worth? So we need, oh, and that our fence at the Aquatic Center is unnecessary. And then you got some more issue clocks in the Aquatic Center, and then the bathroom water is extremely cold in the Aquatic Center now also. Y'all had that time to fix that problem, and still it's not fixed. And you need to talk to your people about losing our signal, like when they're turning and everything, because I'm gonna keep on calling every time I see a Clayton County resident doing that, because my dollars paid for that. In that accident, my dollar was paid for that. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Farmer, we will respond to you. Matter of fact, we're gonna put it in writing for you. And as far as the bus stop, there, we have a ribbon cutting this Saturday at 10 o'clock for where they moved it from the spot you're complaining about, back towards the building. Thank you.
23 days, is that thing gonna be moved Saturday?
Ribbon cutting Saturday.
Is it gonna be moved Saturday?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll be there.
Eric Bell.
First of all, I'd like to start off, give honor to God, for him, all our strength flows. Secondly, I'd like to start off that it's about time in Clayton County that we...
State your name.
Eric Bell, Clayton County. Resident, lifelong resident of Clayton County. And I just think it's about time that we enact sensible legislation for criminal justice reform in Clayton County. It's extremely troubling to me as a citizen to know that across America, that change is happening, reform is happening, and that Clayton County is staying still, both as the blackest and the bluest county in Georgia. It's extremely troubling to me to not hold the ideas of the Democratic Party and also the black community. It's extremely troubling to me. Day in and day out, we have people going to jail for simple things such as marijuana possession, which over the United States, we have seen industry come about where billions of dollars are made, but we are still holding peoples in shackles and chains for simple possession of marijuana. I'm extremely blessed. I feel like I was able to escape the pen, and I was able to make it out the trap a little. But that was by the grace of God, just like every other kid that grew up in Clayton County, or maybe in America that dabbled and dabbled or maybe smoked a joint or two in high school, but I didn't get caught. If I got caught, I probably wouldn't be standing here today. If I got caught, I wouldn't have been able to attend more house, college. Would have lost my hope scholarship. I would definitely have lost a scholarship from the Navy. If I got caught, my aspirations to be a lawyer would have went down the bucket. And I just didn't get caught. But we have day in and day out, young brothers and sisters in high school not yet have the capacity of full adults to rationalize their decisions, but we're changing their lives right then and there. It's just time to make sensible change. Fulton County did it. There's legislation in Georgia that exists that we can do the same thing. It might even be simple since it already exists when it require much thought to actually write the legislation. Secondly, criminal justice reform, again, we have to revisit the Citizens Review Board. I really appreciate the time that we had about a week ago or so. They had to talk about the grievances, and we came to a consensus that some type of review board or committee should be in place. And I'm extremely excited to see that come into fruition in the future. With that being said, God bless you. Please make the correct decisions that we need to see our county move forwards in the future as a shining example of the state of Georgia and the United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Frank Warren. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't have a question. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Eric Bell, for coming forward. But we have to be very mindful of making sure that narratives go forward with total truth. The first thing is, this board took several times to sit down and talk through several of the items that you brought before us this evening.
Thank you.
Number one, I want to let you know that I did speak with Solicitor General as we asked you to, and he said that he's already set up a meeting with you. Number two, we've asked for you to please go back and see what is in place that we're doing in this county, because this county is leading that charge to make sure that we are not locking up young people for minor charges such as that. Number three, we have to remember, as we stated before, that when it comes to the use of marijuana for recreation purposes, that is a state law that must be revisited, and it is still illegal in the state of Georgia. So when you compare us to Fulton County or any other county, you have to remember, at the end of the day, it's still unlawful. We have to be mindful that sometimes things are put in place, but you're not able to see the result of what you're trying to put in place, really contribution. So once again, I'm gonna really suggest that you go back and have those conversations, and that the entire board, as well as the public, understands that that is not the posture of our county, which is to affect young people's lives in that negative manner. Your speech was very eloquent, but we have to remember that in Clayton County, we gotta look at what really is happening here. And those members are not in line with the nation, but I do agree with you with the problems of the nation, and I stand with you to continue to get that message out. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioner, this Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated, Clayton County. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the citizens of our community. They voted and they passed the MARTA tax, and we have MARTA. They voted and passed the East Splotch recently, the renewal of the East Splotch, and that was a beautiful thing our citizens did. And I'd like to thank them again for their vote and the renewal of the splotch tax. With all of those things stated, and as I travel throughout the community, I look at low-hanging fruit, the things that we can accomplish now with the talent that we have on hand and with the funding that we have on hand. Beautification is very, very critical. We spent a lot of money on brand new sidewalks. We have weeds coming through the sidewalk. We have weeds coming through the curb. We have weeds everywhere. In my community alone, there's been four feet of weeds, overgrown brush over the sidewalk. We have got to do better. Now, to me, that's low-hanging fruit. I understand that we are under pandemic, the prison system that normally cuts our grass. We got to revisit that to sort of, we can send a message that our community and the quality of life is there. Now, with that stated, I am very, very concerned about the Sheriff Department. Now, people come to me in confidence and share things with me, and I think I called Chuck Reed about a month and a half ago, that we had COVID-19 cases in jail. Now, some correction officers came to me, of course, some parents that had individuals that was incarcerated. Now, we are looking at a multi-man out of lawsuit. I understand the sheriff is a constitutional officer, but yet his budget comes from the taxpayers of this community. Yet, we have to pay the lawsuit funding that come out of the general fund because we uninsured. When is it that we're gonna hold the sheriff accountable for his actions? Because at the end of the day, this funding is 16 million and counting. We have about 90 cases at the Civil Service Board. Far as reinstatement, that's back pay. All of this funding comes out of the general fund. And we, somebody's got to be held accountable. I understand he's a constitutional officer, but if we have to go to the governor and ask to sit down with him to intervene, to stop some of this madness, this is what we need to do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mapilar Dawn.
Hello. My name is Mapilar Dawn, and I am a resident of District Three and a self-employed web print graphic artist of over 14 years. It is in this capacity that I lend my voice, a little perspective to the conversations surrounding the new Clayton County logo. Now, as a graphic artist myself, I am very empathetic to how vulnerable the artists are right now, putting their work on display for everyone to consume and also critique. So before saying anything, I would like to thank them for their time, their energy, and all of the hard work that they have put into the product. I appreciate that diversity was at the forefront of this design concept. As an immigrant, it means the world that even during a time when certain sections of the society have chosen to minimize the contribution of the immigrant, uh, community, you have chosen to highlight the beauty of the addition, of our addition to Clayton County. However, I am not in favor of the design and these are my reasons why. My primary objection to this design is the overuse of colors. You never want to use more than three colors in a logo design because the more colors you use, the more you take away from the impact of the logo. In this case, I counted at least seven colors. In my opinion, this, a simpler logo with a simple color palette will communicate our message better than the current design. I actually like the Clayton County text that's on the logo. So I'll be interested to see that in different color schemes. So it is my opinion that we do away with the top part of the logo completely or go back to the drawing board to come up with something that's a little, that's a little less imposing in terms of color, size, and symbolism. I understand why the airplane was used. But if we use that emblem without the use of the words under it, no one will know what we're referring to. When people think of the airport, Clayton County is now one of the top 10 things that they're associated with. So us using it in connection to the airport does not, does not benefit us in the current market. In conclusion, I think the design is currently too busy. Multicolor logos sometimes do work. Take Google and eBay, for example. But what you will find with Google and eBay is that they are also very simple designs. They understood that they had taken all of the risks that they could with having more than three colors and chose simple fonts instead to finish off their logos. I think we can break, we can break some rules here, but as it currently stands, we're compromising the look and feel of the logo, the messaging, and future incorporation of the logo into other marketing campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I would like you to have this, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next, the board will consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion.
Second.
I second the motion. Any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Yes, hello. That's unmuted. I'm so sorry. I didn't have an opportunity to take that logo piece out, um, separately, although I did have an opportunity. But, um, I apologize to the board because the way we get the agenda is with letters. And then by the time we're here, it's in a number format. So I had to kind of go back in and look at it. So, but let me say this, as I said before, I really liked the work that was put forward. But I spent the last couple of weeks really researching the logos and how they're utilized. And I have to, I have to not only, um, uh, agree with the statements that were made. I think that the work that was done up until now is phenomenal. The research is phenomenal. But two things, uh, we have to consider the cost of implementing that logo. When you're talking about so many colors involved, I personally spoke to five different graphic artists on different levels just in the last couple of weeks. The cost to implement that logo is going to be very costly for us. The other thing is we have to look at, which we receive, is the use of it. So we're right now in COVID-19 and dealing with a budget that is already constrained. So where it's awesome, I think that we definitely need to take a step back and make sure that it gives us a fresh look, but from a cost, um, uh, effective, um, manner. So that's really what I wanted to say. And I've already said it before. The logo itself, I think the use of the, um, plane does denote a little bit more. And I did just one other thing. I looked at all of the top counties throughout the United States, so I do compare. And I noticed that their logos are in association with their seals. So they're not separate and aside in a lot of cases. There are some things that marry one to the other so that when you see that logo, you identify it with that county. So, um, for that reason, I just wanted to make that statement before I voted on this item.
Okay, we are voting on the consent agenda. We already have-
And it's on the consent agenda, sir.
Okay, well, we already have a, uh, motion and a second. Are there any other statements or questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Four one, it passes. Uh, Commissioner Franklin Warner, opposed.
The next item is item number five, Recommendation for Award of Contract CP Number 20-74.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. Um, this item number is CP 20-74, which is Maintenance Repair Operating Supplies, Industrial Supplies, and Related Products and Services. It is an annual contract that we're requesting to use, um, to use the Omni Partners Cooperative Contract. Um, and this is with Home Depot USA Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia. And the, the funding source will be various county funds.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, who made the second? Was that Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg made second. Are there any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Nay.
Four one, it passes. Commissioner Franklin Warner, uh, in opposition. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next items are items number 12, Resolution 2020-101. Item number 13, Resolution 2020-107. And item number 26, Resolution 2020-120.
Would you like me to take those?
Take each separately.
Okay, separate, okay. First is Resolution 2020-101, which is a resolution to provide for a change in the name of the Sector One Police Precinct to the Sharkey Buford Sector One Police Precinct. To authorize the chairman to execute any required document and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide an effective date of the resolution or for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second. Hamburg? Yes.
Make sure your mark can't mention a Hamburg. She, she's second the motion. Any questions? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, before we continue on, um, Mr. Reed, I'd like to, uh, we'd like, we'll kind of come out in the, in the audience.
She wants a point of privilege. Come, come forward. Uh, we're gonna ask Mr. Sharkey to come forth as well.
I guess we got another sonogram tonight, right? I was thinking when I went back to my office, got, y'all, we've got some really history in here at one time tonight. We've got the, we had the first, first, um, African-American police officer with Clayton County PD. We had the second and the third. So that's history that we have here tonight in this same room. And, uh, you know, Mr. Buford goes, if you know him, his legacy precedes him. He is just the most caring person. And in my day job, I can't tell you, if I have a kid that said, okay, I want to go to Fort Valley, Mr. Buford's gonna be over in my office in a minute. And, and then on the phone, trying to get him in Fort Valley or whatever, you know, but they don't require high GPAs. But, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Just a joke. Just a joke, just a joke. But, but it was a Hamburg. But, uh, but that's just what, he cares about young people. And just from, I've known him in the community and the organization that he started over on Flint River. What's the name of it? Hope Shelter. I'm sorry? Oh, you'll tell about it. Okay, he started that. And so many times he would, you know, feed and help, you know, these men out of his own pocket. And, um, that's just a lot I had to say about him.
No, I was gonna say, actually, the shelter started, uh, at another location and was moved to Flint River. I'm trying to think of where it was, but, uh, in Haightville. Okay, okay. Clayton County part, right. But it started there and, and I just want to echo what Commissioner Gregory has said about, and I want to call him chief. Cause for so long, that's what we called him, our police chief and all. So, but anyway, but thank you so much, Mr. Buford, for being that caring person and caring about Clayton County. And most of all, the Wildcats. Fort Valley State.
Yeah, right quickly, again, he was the first. He broke that, that race barrier. He laid the foundation for all of us to come on board and to mention, uh, once again, you know, if it had not been for him, I probably wouldn't have been, you know, the first African-American, uh, Chief of Police. So thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you for caring and still being around, still taking care of Clayton County people. So thank you.
Mrs. Buford is here. Would you come up with us, please, also? And that's great. You know, you think about it, without Mr. Buford, there would be no Chief Roberts, would there? There you go.
Resolution Number 2020-103. A resolution to provide for a change in the name of the Sector One Police Precinct to Sharkey Buford Police Precinct. To authorize the chairman to execute any required document and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Whereas in the early 1970s, when the battles for civil rights in America began, the process of transitioning from segregation towards integration. Sharkey Buford served as Clayton County's first African-American sheriff's deputy before transitioning to become the first African-American police officer in the city of Jonesboro. And whereas after working with the city of Jonesboro, Buford joined the Clayton County Police Department in the early 1980s and worked as an officer serving the citizens of Clayton County for several years. And whereas Buford also served the citizens of Clayton County as a commission aide before becoming the county's first African-American department head, running the then Health and Safety Department until his retirement. And whereas in honor of Buford's service to the county and his notable distinction, serving as a trailblazer for African-Americans in Clayton County, the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County wishes to change the name of the Sector One Police Precinct located at 3161 Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, 30294, to the Sharkey Buford Police Precinct. And whereas the Board of Commissioners deems it in the best interest of Clayton County and the county will be best served by renaming the Sector One Police Precinct to the Sharkey Buford Police Precinct. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, and it is hereby resolved. Section one, the Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes Clayton County to rename the Sector One Police Precinct located at 3161 Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, 30294, to the Sharkey Buford Police Precinct. The Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the chairman to execute any required document and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. Section two, the clerk of the Board of Commissioners is hereby requested to ask that all interested county departments take appropriate action to amend the maps, signs, and records of Clayton County to reflect this name change. Section three, this resolution shall be effective on the date of its approval by the Board of Commissioners. So be it resolved this seventh day of July 2020, Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
First of all, I want to thank God, uh, for this honor. Secondly, I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Gregory for submitting my name to the full Board of Commissioners. Thirdly, I want to thank the full Board of Commissioners for, uh, agreeing on this resolution and passing this resolution, what I want to say. And fourth, I want to thank the citizens of Clayton County. Y'all are good people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, Mr. Reed, well, give him a minute. I'm sorry. Okay, I think we're good to go. Mr. Reed?
All right, the next is Resolution 2020-107, which is a resolution of Clayton County Board of Commissioners uh, to authorize a referendum election, allowing the qualified voters of Clayton County to determine whether to authorize the county to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises beginning at 11:00 AM on Sundays. To authorize the chairman to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any questions?
Yes, not so much a question. Um, I'm concerned that this is coming before our board at this time. Um, as Commissioner of District Three, I have received numerous concerns about, um, liquor stores that are in other areas and, but they're in the city limits. So my concern is at this time, since we've got cities that have annexed out of Clayton County, unincorporated, that already have the ability to be able to, um, sell alcohol. Um, I'm just concerned about this. Isn't this for restaurant support?
That's correct. It's the brunch bill. So restaurants can start selling, uh, at 11, sell, selling alcohol, buy the drink at 11 o'clock.
Cause they already serve alcohol. I mean, you can buy alcohol, you know, at a certain hour anyway on Sundays now. So this is just for restaurant sales and, so, but this is the other thing. Why wouldn't we be already be in line with the state? But thank you for that. Why wouldn't we already be in line with the state?
I'm sorry. Yeah, the state paid the way for the individual communities to vote on this measure. It's called the brunch.
Sunday brunch.
And all this does is, is, um, allow, set the process for the citizens of the county to vote on that in November.
That's correct.
Thank you for that, for clarification.
Any other questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. Uh, it's unanimous. Next.
Uh, final is Resolution 2020-120, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a lease agreement with Marl Georgia Investors LLC for the lease of office space located at 1590 Adamson Parkway, Marl, Georgia, for use by the Clayton County Public Defender's Office. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all, uh, other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect the appropriate revenue source and expense. All this may be required under the terms of the agreement to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Yes, that's one I did do quite a bit of research on. And it's my understanding that the state has reduced their, um, space and, um, that is the route that they are going at this time. And understanding that this office holds both, um, county-supported positions as well as state-supported positions. And understanding that we in the midst of COVID-19 at this time, and again, dealing with budget constraints. I think that we may be kind of jumping ahead a little bit. I just want to make a suggestion to the board that we hold this and we look at maybe space that we already have within the county that can be utilized. Because this larger space, again, I've talked to folks with the state, the amount of space they're asking for, um, that's quite a bit and it's gonna cost us a lot of money, especially considering right now that, um, the court systems are closed. Um, so, and again, I confirm with the state that they have consolidated their premises because of the fact that this teleworking is working. And so they're gonna continue to go- And so they're gonna continue to go to a teleworking model when it comes to, um, the judicial system and folks working within it. And I would just see, like to see us kind of consider this for a later time or date to save us a little bit of money during these tough times.
Well, let me say this, I've-
And be more effective and efficient. That's all.
I've toured their facility, uh, numerous times, and they are definitely out of space. I, I'm clear with what you're saying about the teleworking. Uh, they have to have office space in which to meet the clients. They're not gonna have them come to their houses. Uh, they also need, uh, the space for storage space. So this, this new location will afford them, from what I've been told, everything that they would need to be effective and productive in serving the citizens of Clayton County when it comes to the end, endogen care. Um, and I believe it was, do you recall the dollar amount in addition to?
Uh, the dollar amount in addition to?
We were paying rent on the last place that we had. There is no other county space available, so let me put that out there. But this space here, it was not going to cost a substantially amount more.
Right, I believe that the, the total, the amount of the monthly rent was a little bit more than seven thousand dollars a month. I believe that's correct. I had to look at it and see. Uh, but the property owner has provided some money towards, uh, renovating the space a- as well.
Okay. One other question, Mr. Chairman. You said there is no other space. So we're saying that the, the space that we renovated for, um, I think it was for the Health Department? Before, there was discussions about why are we going back in that building because there was so much space in there? Is that entire space being utilized at this time? The entire building? Not the part, it's just for the Health Department? That entire building is being used?
Yes, they renovated it and, and retrofitted it to their needs. Uh, number one, for growth, there is another, uh, aspect to the Health Department where they have included a pharmacy in that area. And the space that has been built out is going to be utilized. They're gonna bring some of the other, uh, departments that were outside of that building that had different locations, like at Phoenix Boulevard, all those people are coming back in-house. So there's no space there.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and Mr. Chair, the, uh, the monthly rent is seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Uh, we do need a, uh, executive session for personnel in litigation.
Okay, first we have board appointments. Uh, first one is to the Green Space Land Trust Board Appointments. We have two members left to appoint. The two remaining appointments will begin immediately and will expire June sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any recommendations?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on one of those positions, uh, where we, I would like for us to hold it, I'm trying to get information regarding, uh, the responsibilities of that board. And I know we mentioned a couple of meetings back about reworking some things with that board. Uh, so I do have a couple of people interested, but I need to find out a little bit more about that. That's for one of those positions.
All right, there's, if there's nobody else-
Same way, Mr. Chair. I mean, there, I, I think I need a better understanding of the responsibilities of that board because there are people that I probably say in my mind that, okay, yeah, they would be good. But, you know, I want to be able to relate to them the exact responsibility as it pertains to Green Space. So I, I would go, go with Commissioner Hambrick. We can hold both of them, again.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, here or none? What we'll do is hold those till next meeting. Please, uh, send out, uh, Madam Clerk the guidelines and, uh, duties and responsibilities to each Commissioner, so they-
And the date, the days and time they meet.
And I think the date and times will be made up by, as a decision of the full board, their board, once they get established.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And can you cross-reference that information with the Conservation Board that already meets? Maybe that's part of what we need a clarification on. Because there's a Con- Conservation Board already, and then the Green Space. How are those two related, or are they not related at all?
I don't believe they're related, uh, at all, but we will forward the information to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. Who made the second?
There was no second. There was no motion. We're just gonna hold, hold both until next, uh, meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we need, uh, executive session for litigation. Well, oh, oh, I'm sorry. We do have one more. One more board appointment for the Library Board. Uh, Ms. Lily Gothen, term on the Library Board will expire.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hold that one.
Hold on, hold on, let me read it, let me read it. Will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. New appointment will begin June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty and expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Commissioner Hambrick, did you have a recommendation?
Uh, yes, I would like to hold that one for the next, uh, meeting, please.
Anybody opposed? Anybody have any other recommendations? All right, here or none? Uh, hold that one as well, Madam Clerk. All right, now, uh, Mr. Reed has indicated that we need executive session for litigation, real, real estate. Did you say real estate? Litigation and personnel.
That's correct.
Litigation and personnel. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Franklin Warner, second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Everybody have a good day. Motion to reconvene.
Move.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Sound like the Twilight Zone.
All right, I have, uh, two settlement agreements, uh, both arising from the same incident. First involves, um, Myron Jackson, uh, settlement that involves an accident that occurred on September fourth, twenty eighteen, at or near the intersection of Wesley Drive and State Route three fourteen in unincorporated Clayton County, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Um, and then the second is, uh, an accident involving Meosia Homes that, uh, occurred on the same date, September fourth, twenty eighteen, at the intersection of Wesley Drive and State Route three fourteen in unincorporated Clayton County, um, in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those, any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ms. Ambles?
Good evening, again, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. On behalf of Court Administration, Human Resources is requesting a step increase for State Court Clerk, for State Court Law Clerk Senior Denise Riley from Grade Twenty-Seven Step Three, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three dollars total comp, to Grade Twenty-Seven Step Fourteen, ninety-four thousand, thirty-one dollars. The cost of this request is eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. The co- the, the, the request is based on the level of experience and education.
All right, is there a motion?
Uh-huh.
Uh, moved by, uh, Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, motion fails due to the lack of a second.
And the last one, Chairman, on behalf of Court Administration, Human Resources is requesting a step increase for Superior Court Law Clerk Senior Chandler Edmonds from Grade Twenty-Seven Step Eleven, total comp eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, to Grade Twenty-Seven Step Fourteen, ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. The cost of the request is three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and is based on Ms. Edmonds receipt of membership to the Georgia State Bar.
All right, is there a motion?
Uh-huh.
A motion made by Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? All right, motion fails due to the lack of a second.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other business for the Board? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh-huh, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Franklin Warner, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Have a good evening, all.